This last and. I'm here for thousands of years. With them, we will get out of it. We should approve the agenda as presented. It's on center. With that, vote for motion to approve the agenda as presented, moved by directors, seconded by directors. All all those in favor. If you oppose, this is not a proposal. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Patrick. Officer, I know this will be after the fact, but it appears that we were not live streaming, but we will have a. Also, the minutes of May eighth. In our day, she has the minutes of the regular meeting of May eighth, 24th, the. Dumped. There's no errors or wrong issues. I thought direct. Our Martin's hand was a motive into. Moved and seconded by director Douglas. All those people. Any opposed, unopposed, motion carries.
Sure.
Nothing. We will probably go there. You read it up? Other people. So. I'm hoping people had this is an opportunity to give input to the board on any agenda item that you see here today. What we ask is the presenter in a court of almost. And let us know. You're referring to in your input and the agreement for speaker to America. Yes. The microphone is open if you wish to give public input. First.
Are we allowed to cross the green line?
Uh, no. I guess please and forgiving public input, please step to the podium. And maybe we need somebody to do access control.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. It's Kim Bernard from Shawnee again Lake, and I'm here with gratitude to speak to SR four. It's a very comprehensive report on the waste recycling and waste management operations, solid waste management plan. So it's the annual report and the progress report. And I just want to say that it looks good. It relies heavily on user participation and following all the rules. But I think that. The amount of waste that we generate is only going to increase. And I think that we also need to look at where that waste is going for long term purposes. It's going to the United States and that situation could change in the near future. I'm also wondering too about our ongoing commitment to wildlife management with regards to managing attractiveness and the bear situation. So I'm hoping that users will see in this plan, the option of bear proofed totes that require us to unclip them on garbage days. And so there's, there, there's a really important piece that the public will have to, have to get their heads around. And for, in order for that plan to work. And lastly, I just think that. I just want to again, thank staff for the work that they've done, the foresight that they've done, but there's going to be more of a situation in that waste has to go somewhere and we don't have a long term plan to deal with the increased population that we expect to have and the amount of waste that is supposed to be diverted from the landfills and how everyone will need to participate in that. So I probably will have some questions after the meeting. So I'll stay, stay around for question period to see how this discussion goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your input. Anyone else for public input before we resume our agenda? I had seen none, Mr. Rob. Chair, we're going to go through our delegations first. We have a delegation from Beverly Sudeman and Couch Women's Health Collective regarding the May twenty periods of awareness week and announced, then perhaps everyone might introduce her colleagues who will be today as well.
Thank you very much. I will not be speaking because there's a perceived conflict of interest for me as a CVRD employee to be presenting. But my colleagues, Kate Coyote, who's the vice chair of the Couch Women's Health Collective and Rhoda Taylor, who is the lead researcher on our period poverty research project here in the region, will be presenting. Thank you.
Thank you to the chair and entire board for having us present to you about the issue of period poverty during national period poverty awareness week. My name is Kate Coyote. I'm a registered midwife and I'm the vice chair, as Bev mentioned, of the Couch and Women's Health Collective. I'm here with my colleagues, Rhoda Taylor, who is the primary researcher on the Cowichin Period Poverty Project and Bev Sudeman, who is the CWHC volunteer executive director. We believe period poverty is a community issue. It is defined as a lack of access to menstrual products, including pads, tampons, pain medication and underwear, other hygiene facilities, waste management and education. It causes physical, mental and emotional challenges. Period poverty results in many menstruating people staying home from school and work with negative impacts on their education and economic opportunities. A 2023 study found that one in four menstruating women in Canada have had to choose between paying for menstrual products and/or paying for other essentials such as food or rent. Recognizing that we do not live in a binary world, we will be using inclusive language throughout the presentation, talking about menstruating people rather than women, as it is important to note that not all people who menstruate identify as women or girls. How do I check that? Are you sure?
We'll believe you.
You get to, you're the logistic person.
Now go down.
Yeah, we'll get that one. Okay, so before we begin, CWHC wants to acknowledge the stewardship of the traditional ancestral and unceded territories now known as the Cowichin Valley by the Kwatzin, Malahat, Halalt, Peneliket, Semunus, Liahson, Subasit and Dididat peoples. We are grateful to be living and working in this place and offer our respect and solidarity for the struggles to achieve reconciliation. We take seriously our role in responding to the truth and reconciliation commission's calls to action, which includes advancing our learning about decolonization. We seek to partner with indigenous organizations and individuals in respectful ways and learn from indigenous communities and teachings. CWHC, also known as the Cowichin Women's Health Collective, is a BC nonprofit society and a federally registered charity. One of our goals as an emerging community health center is to establish a gendered health center within the Cowichin region to ensure that the health needs of self identified women and their families are met in a culturally safe, trauma informed and holistic way. Our mission is to promote the health and wellness of self identified women and girls through the provision of low barrier health programs and services, sharing knowledge and providing health education in a safe environment. CWHC's involvement in the period poverty project is one way that we are realizing our mission. We believe that by addressing this issue head on, by talking about it at all levels of society, by acknowledging the stigma and the impact that it has on women and all menstruating people living in the Cowichin region is how we create change that fosters a healthier community for everyone. The period poverty project was a research study conducted in partnership with United Way of British Columbia. Our core research question asked, how can the Cowichin community support people with limited resources to address stigma and increase access to menstrual products? Please welcome Rhoda Taylor, who will tell you about the project. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate your time. The project addressed period poverty issues through an online survey, interviews and focus groups, as well as a photo voice research component. The focus groups were made up of menstruating people of all ages, genders, ethnic identities, sexual orientations and levels of education. Some were service providers and others were made up of people who access services in the community. The focus group and participants come from locations across the region, from Ladysmith to Mill Bay, and we apologize to Lake Cowichin as we were unable to hold a group there. We just were unable to attract participation. Interviews were conducted primarily with service providers to best understand their experience of trying to distribute products, what they learned and what they needed to be affected. The photo voice component was able to empower menstruating people to create art from their experience. Working with Judy Brayden, a community minded artist, we were able to turn the images into art and create an interesting exhibit, which told a coherent story about the issues and stigma related to period poverty. Wondering if I can move that. Okay. The project addressed period poverty issues through an online. Our partners, there we are, served on the project advisory committee as well as providing support to the project in other ways. It's important to note that each partner had a different type of service and therefore a different creative response on how best to distribute product through their existing program. The food pantry in Kin Park simply placed product on the shelf, no interactions with the users of the service, unless the users chose to engage with the farmers in the park. The library system put product in their bathrooms, each with a different adaptation, again with no interaction with the bathroom users. The food bank put product on the shelves so that when the food back customers were shopping for their hamper, they could select product. And I want to tell just a really quick story about that. The food, knowing when people learned that there was product on the shelf, Henry was telling me that he had one panicked father, single father come running in because his young daughter had had her first period and he didn't have a clue and what to buy, how, and so he ran to the food bank for that support. Other partners engaged actively in education with their program participants and welcomed this initiative as part of a larger body image discussion or opportunities to learn more and access reusable product. We were working with young individuals as well, and this was kind of was key for that. I am pressing and nothing is happening. Pardon? Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. From the survey results, we learned that those with experience of those with experience of period poverty, sixty three percent had not been able to access products for free when needed. Over ninety two percent of the product access was single use with only seven percent being reusable. Seventy seven percent of respondents indicated an interest in using reusable products. Those in favor saw reusable products as a cost effective, environmentally positive action, while others noted the upfront costs of accessing reusable products was very high and about the potential difficulty of access to washing machines. And a concern about possible lack of hygiene. We asked the participants to tell us anything else which would help to increase our understanding or cultural sensitivity. And comments included concerns about costs. It's humiliating to ask for help to buy these essential feminine objects. The need for bladder control and leak products. And that didn't just include the stereotypical older, that included women who had just given birth, women who had had a number of births. It was much broader than we had anticipated. Education about reusable products such as menstrual cups and education about the debilitating effects of chronic menstrual cramps, dysmenorrhea and other pain disorders. We learned a few things. For example, there's a significant variation in duration and frequency of menstruation. Some health issues led to prolonged and frequent periods and significantly larger cost. I have a platelet issue. It does not stop. I'm losing so much blood, it's painful. We're talking about an individual who bled for three weeks at a time. Again, not something we would automatically think of. Costs for menstrual products are enormous and vary widely between families. Costs involved with menstruation are not just for the product, but for pain medication as well. I would curl up into a ball. It was almost like I had contractions again. There are also the costs related to the inability to work or attend school. I try and be as resourceful as I can, just like when I was living on my own for the first time, no money at all. I would just not go out anywhere and not go out again. Many of the most vulnerable individuals experienced limited or no periods. They reported this was due to birth control methods, drug use or low body weight. The periods they do have are described as unpredictable and light. Virtually all groups describe the difficulty of dealing with the lack of predictability. Quote, so if you go to the, get to the bathroom and you realize, oh crap, I got my period, what then? You can just sit there and try to evaluate your options. You can sit there and contemplate life and hope. A great many of the stories were about being taken by surprise and having to deal with embarrassing situation. Quote, like somehow there's some people who expected we were going to know it was going to come at like Tuesday at two o'clock. Families with several menstruating members discussed the high costs they faced. Quote, when I find that I supply my teenager and friends and it's very expensive and my daughters sometimes don't want to come up to me and ask for products because they know it's going to cost me money and they know we don't have a lot of money and so they're actually scared to ask me for the products. So some of these families were a mother who was still menstruating and three or four teenage daughters. Regardless of age, urinary incontinence is a problem affecting a significant number of participants. It's not just about periods. Sometimes it's about urinary incontinence. You have a few children, that happens. What are you supposed to do? Having free product located in difficult to access locations added to the stress. This was really emphasized by younger individuals based on their experiences at schools. Participants, particularly trans individuals, expressed a lot of frustration at the lack of practical support and planning within schools. Schools are mandated to provide free product. That doesn't mean they're easy to access. Teens were especially angered about the lack of understanding and equity. Children's whose periods start when they're in elementary or middle school face greater barriers. Imagine being nine. Dealing with the issues of unexpected bleeding is especially difficult when you're very young. Grab and go kits for building evacuations should include plans to provide menstrual products. A number of respondents reported being evacuated from their buildings for extended periods of time, more than eight hours. And of course, they weren't able to take their bags with them or anything, which can be very awkward, awkward when you're menstruating. One of the unexpected benefits of boosting a social media post to encourage participation in the online survey we ran was there was a very vibrant discussion with seventy two comments about the issues. All of you, no doubt, on social media have seen some of your vibrant discussions. We had one. One key concern is why was the state involved in personal hygiene issues? Response from another participant, when people are unable to meet their basic needs and are not given help, the expense always falls on society. Access to menstrual supplies and hygiene is basic healthcare. The purpose of the photo voice exhibit was to provide an educational opportunity for policymakers, administrators and others within the healthcare and social services system about the experience of social, of period poverty. Approximately eleven hundred people visited the exhibition in the three weeks that it was available at portals.
Just a little travel, one second. I'm just going to add for motion to extend for the time for the delegation is inspired. With by director Stables, seconded by director McDonald, all those in favor. Close motion carries.
Thank you, we're very close to the end. Menstruating people want to be asked about their experiences. They also want to be heard and have their concerns addressed. Period poverty could be solved with the elimination of poverty. The two are interconnected and the problem of poverty seems to be increasing rather than decreasing. The project highlighted some of the challenges faced by menstruating people that bring into sharp relief the marginalization of women in the healthcare system, the prevalence of incontinence after birthing, the lack of consideration of pain associated with menstruation, health conditions that exacerbate menstrual bleeding. Having a period is expensive. It is expensive for single women and it's much more expensive for families. Having menstrual products in all public bathrooms is important because men are also responsible for the health and well being of their families. In summary, it was a great project, but there's much more work to be done. There is a movement building within local governments to alleviate poverty of all kinds in their communities. The United Ways Period Promise Campaign commits to increase access to free menstrual products within our communities so that, so that everyone who menstruates can go to work, get to school, access services and stay connected to their community. BC is definitely a leader globally in addressing period, period poverty and menstrual equity more generally. In 2019, all public schools were required to have free menstrual products in school restrooms. In 2022, the government of BC established the multi sector period poverty task force to further advance the province's goal to end period poverty and remove the stigma associated with menstruation. The task force report was expected by March 2024, proposing sustainable approaches to period poverty in BC. The funding for the Cowichin project was funneled through this provincial initiative. Some local governments in BC, such as Sanich, are taking action to ensure that menstrual products are available in all public facilities. Local governments in BC are still awaiting direction from the province after the UBCM 2019 reservation, resolution was tabled with the executive. At least that's how we read the documentation. Therefore, there is a movement to bring a resolution back to the floor at the UBCM to move this initiative forward. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I'll turn to colleagues at the board.
Presentation and that is not so much a question as a comment. Can create a distance that prevents us from hearing and acting on distressing information. This is all too often been the case for me. When I talked with councillor Phelps Bondrock, who I believe is from Sanich, right? He, at the UBCM last year, he made me aware of the experience of experiences of vulnerable people, including what I now know to be period poverty. His research and advocacy is reflected in the motion he created for the UBCM. And I think it's included in our information. So I hope everyone gets a chance to, to read it. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll, I'll look at the work. I did get to come to one of the events for some time when it was at the Art Center. As a, as a female, one of the things that, this is one of the things you live within your life. You, you know, I'm in that exiting generation or age group of all of this. But when I was growing up, and I'm sure I know every single woman here has a story or a hundred about this, as do all of our friends and all of our mothers, our grandmothers, our aunts, you know, our sisters. This is part, a part of a woman's life, of her life. And the, this is something that I'm so excited to see come to this table for conversation because it is something that I would imagine that no one here ever thought would come to this table or to other government tables, because we just don't think about it. And for too many generations of women, we just deal with it. And it needs to be something, you know, it is about equity and equality for all people to have access to the same. You know, access to something that allows them to have access to being able to participate, whether it's at tables like these or, you know, anywhere in society. And so it's important for us to have this conversation and to really understand the impact of it. Because this effect is, you know, women across the board. And so I just really want to honor you and thank you for the work that you're doing to make sure that this is a part of our normal conversation. Because once we normalize this and accept this, hey, you know, I still remember my dad when I was like six at the grocery store handing me the products for my mom and making me go to the register to pay for them. And I was like, this. And it was a joke. It's still a joke in our family because it was something in his generation. They just, he, they have such a huge stigma. And, and that is just only slowly been shifting. It is not something that, you know, people are really comfortable about. And this will help us get there and that will help. We reach the goals that, that you're, that we need. So thank you so much for having us.
And I'm just going to second, this is a, across the, although we don't talk about it, it, it is something that is impacting everyone. Right, you're just not necessarily aware of it. You're not aware of the people who do not go to school because they cannot afford the product or do not go to work because they cannot afford the product or cannot afford the pain medication. Or as I said, in families where the cost of product is so large that it's a choice between food or not. It, it is, it is having a major impact. And we do see a lot of single fathers who do have to go buy the product.
And shame, that's the difference.
And the shame. That's a big point. That's very much a big point.
Thank you. Director Wilson.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Ruth. And with the, with the little conversation we had outside there just now, as has been pointed out, this is something that I was not even aware of. But my dad brought it to us. Just to illustrate the depth to which this goes to, you did tell me a story about the lady who had been shot.
Well, one of those things that came up at, at a couple of times at focus groups was an individual who lived fairly rough, but who had the ethics that she would not steal. No matter how bad things got, she would not steal. The one product that she found herself stealing was feminine hygiene products. And, and it was, she was ashamed. It was the hardest thing for her. And, and in talking to some of the retailers, they do talk about it being something that is stolen because there, people are placed in a position of having no options.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone? Just want to thank you again and the prepared chair group for all of your work. Thank you for your advocacy and, and I know Director Jack as well has brought the resolution forward to our group. So it'll be assessed for the RBCM this year. And I think that I could hopefully safely say that you have our support. For your work.
I do have one more point that I didn't have in here that I want to say, that often people will say, well, will there be waste? That was not our experience at all. We did not find even at Kin Park and all those other, we did not find that there was waste. We were concerned about it. We had the same worries, but that it actually was, did not happen in any of the locations where we place product.
Mr. Robbins. We have the pleasure of a second delegation of, of Brendan, with better, Brendan. With a question, does he already support us or?
That's it. You're wonderful. Thanks. So I tried to come here from my home in Victoria by bus. Does anybody, how many of you sometimes go to Victoria? Most of you. And we, how many of you take the bus to get there? None of you. That's unsurprising because what I discovered is the service. There we go. The service is not very good. If you, on the slideshow, I copied the map that our local, our, our regional commercial bus operator has showing Vancouver Island. And it implies that you could get without, you could travel without a car. You could get to most of the communities on Vancouver Island by public transportation. But it actually turns out it's not. It's so inconvenient that for the vast majority of trips, it is currently in a unsuitable. On the right, I have a screenshot of when I tried to take the bus, the island link from Victoria to Duncan and back for this presentation. And it turns out that the island link bus travels through Duncan, but it doesn't pick up or drop off passengers here. In order to get from Duncan to Victoria, you have to buy a ticket to get to Nanaimo, transfer at the ferry terminal and come down to, and go down to Victoria. And it would cost fifty, sixty dollars. Or if you, if you, if you have a reservation or seventy six dollars for the one way, one way Duncan to Victoria or Victoria to Duncan on their system. And it takes about six, about five hours. Okay, so the good news is that thanks to the CVRD's good work in 2018, we did establish, BC Transit did establish the Route sixty six bus that connects Victoria and Duncan. But there are only four trips a day and they're all oriented toward people from Duncan going to Victoria. So for me, if I had taken the bus, I would have had to leave yesterday, spend the night here, give my presentation and take that bus home tomorrow morning. We think that there are good reasons to do better. We think that there are good reasons to do better. In a typical community, somewhere between twenty and forty percent of people can't drive, including people that don't have a vehicle or don't have a license or have a low income. Some of them can drive, but their vehicles are unreliable. Some people don't want to drive. I would rather have, when I'm traveling over the Malahat, I would rather have somebody else drive for me. But in any case, there is significant demand. So this slide shows the current service that exists between, between South Vancouver Island and Central Vancouver Island. Now, between Suk and Victoria, the number sixty one has forty three buses a day and the fare is two dollars and fifty cents. And unsurprisingly, that bus carries twenty two percent of peak period travelers, thirteen percent of total travelers. So if you have frequent and affordable bus service between, between cities, people use it, twenty two percent of peak period trips. But between Victoria and Duncan, so if I'm in Victoria and I want to go to Suk, forty three buses a day, two dollars and fifty cents. If I want to come up here to Duncan, there are four buses a day, all oriented toward Dunkeners coming to Victoria, and the fare is ten dollars each way, four times the standard fare. Between Victoria, between Duncan and Nanaimo, thanks to your good work, there is now the seventy service and that runs seven times a day and costs seven dollars and fifty cents. And if you want to go from Nanaimo North, the ninety one has eighteen buses a day and costs two dollars and fifty cents. So there's a gap and the big gap is the Route sixty six and to some degree, the Route seventy. It is simply inefficient and unfair that there is not frequent and affordable bus service between Victoria and Duncan. And the reason, you might ask, why are there forty three buses a day between Suk and Victoria and only four buses a day between Duncan and Victoria, about the same distance? Why is that? Victoria and Suk are in the same regional district and Suk and Duncan, Victoria and Duncan are not. And the province does not have a very good process for planning interregional bus service, bus service that connects the regions. So last week, I actually presented a paper on exactly this subject. Why is it that B C, the government does not provide better inner city, interregional bus service and what would be the benefits? I presented it the the Canadian Transportation Research Forum and, you know, got a lot of positive feedback. That's the big picture. Why is it that the province is not filling this gap? This, the immediate picture, the immediate question is what could be done on between between Duncan and Victoria to increase service? And now for the last, ever since I've lived here thirty years, there's often been concerns about ways to reduce traffic congestion on the Malahat. And of all the ways to reduce traffic problems on the Malahat, the smartest one, the one that provides, that is most cost effective and provides the greatest range of benefits, including mobility for non-drivers and reducing traffic accidents and providing a number of other benefits, the smartest one is frequent and affordable bus service. my, so Better Island Transit, I'm president of the organization Better Island Transit. It is working to establish frequent and affordable bus service connecting central and Vancouver, central and South Vancouver Island.
I know. I feel like it's rough.
The ask Oh, he showed support for the concept. I would love to hear your, what you think about this and what support the C V R D might be able to do and if you have any other questions.
Hallelujah. It's that favorite piece of transit and part of our team. I know this later on, it's a discussion of ongoing efforts to, I think, reach the level of service that you're speaking to. Hallelujah. You're definitely reaching to acquire here. It's been a big advocacy piece of mine in my ten years on the board. What we've done, lower fares, higher frequency, longer time of day, changes the way that people think about transit for people like myself who prefer to land in community, use my feet to explore transit often to private vehicle trips. But often struggle to get the support from the province first of all, take shots at B C Transit, they do work with us. Many years of expansion plans for conventional local transit that helps support those interregional groups. We've been not successful in getting that funding from the provincial government. And I think we all recognize that local taxpayers, property taxes aren't the best way to fund transit investments because we bear the burden of those investments and achieve what we want without that support from the provincial government. So I just wanted to say though, big fan, I realize you sent me an email, I haven't responded to yet, municipal basement, different conversation but related for sure. But you have my support, so let's continue to talk. I want to go to my colleagues here, questions and comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. It's for you to, um, this is an interesting discussion to have and let's, I think I'll come up with a question, but the, you know, the reality is when I was first elected, you just didn't travel with the communities. It was amazing to have transportation options from Lake Couchman into into the Florida area. Across the province, what you're proposing, even the limited transportation options that we have now don't exist in the vast majority of the province. Of course, you're aware of this. While we, while listening to your discussion and part of the previous delegations, something struck me that, I think, very different topics, but very similar in where I think the resolution will come, and that was ten dollar a day daycare. Ten dollar a day daycare was advocated and the name escapes me of the lovely white haired lady that advocated so hard for so long. And the, what our chair said about the, the, it's not even the desire, it's the ability of a local property taxpayer to be able to support an initiative like this. So as, as much as I applaud the work and the effort and goals, this is clearly a senior government initiative that is, I think, almost going to have to be funded to be, you know, to almost a hundred percent.
We, we agree. The structural problem that we face is that local governments are, are in, are supposed to support local public transit. And the Ministry of Transportation builds highways that connect communities, but there currently is no planning or standard planning and funding strategy for interregional bus service. And that much of the traffic that would be going on the highway, that would be going between central and South Vancouver Island would be through traffic. It is not fair to expect the Cowichin Valley residents to finance somebody traveling from Parksville to Victoria they're traveling through, and yet they would ride on the sur, on this bus. So just very briefly, the provincial government has a target to essentially double public transit ridership in the next decade. And it has targets to support rural community, rural economic development, that means more tourists. It has targets to reduce accidents and air pollution. All of those are supported by frequent and affordable bus service between Duncan and Nanaimo. But so my message to you is yes, it should be the province, the province should, this should be a high priority for additional public transit funding, for, for spending additional public transit funding. The province has pretty much agreed, it's just that this particular route keeps getting overlooked. They're expanding service in Nanaimo, they're expanding service in other communities, they're spending a lot in the big cities, they're just not spending it on this quarter.
At the conclude of, you know, this, this organization, this region, district has been on the short end of transit funding for a number of years. And I think that this body has to look at the improvements that B C Transit and our transit staff can provide for the, the local users and the people that need the basic necessity of getting into the doctors and getting, so I again urge it with, you know, whatever support that we can bring to, this is an additional pocket of money, additional initiative that I think would have to be posed to the provincial government as, as a very separate initiative that can't by necessity be tied into local transit funding that we provide as a regional district. And hallelujah. Would that have a next, that's a very good answer.
Thank you for this. I think public transportation is a key component of our efforts to boost global justice. And it was really frustrating and disappointing to hear that, you know, public transportation wasn't going to. But I think this is a perfect way to spend some of the climate adaptation, mitigation dollars that we're having, wants to spend and should spend. Thank you for your work.
Any other speakers? So again, I think this, I said, I said to my, my chair, oh, Chair, here, it's really nice when we have the delegation that we all agree with. So please keep up your advocacy. I think this is a really good venue and I would suggest, in this in local councils as well, just to keep reaffirming that because it's about helping us reach our audience as well, which is our community members and the way you present that, at first I was trying to write questions, but then you answered the questions as your presentation went along, which is always a great strategy. And it's nice that it's timed to get you on the agenda here today when we are discussing some of our transit successes and challenges as well. So I just want to thank you for your work and I would also, I think you were advocating as well for some of the like under eighteen transportation fees, free transit, things like that.
Yeah, there are, there are countless ways that we can make public transit more convenient and affordable. But the first thing is just to have enough service to build on. So I, I totally agree.
Last word here to direct the session.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to touch with on that, not only with the women's hygiene products, you know, Phelps, he has that open of under age, by the C M for free fares. He has two moments of these.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Hopefully we'll see you again and, you know, community events wherever you can make your presence known, it's helpful, God, the work will welcome you wherever we can.
Thank you, and hopefully I'll get here by bus next time.
All right. Well, Mr. Robbins, the way the chair will play, we'll move on to our next time committee commissioner reports. So we're at C R one. We just lost for anymore. Did we square it? Looked down my face. So, Mr. Robbins, maybe you can pedal over here and reload some time until the presenter of our next committee commission recommendation comes back. Reload some time. Personal chance for, okay, well, let's take our break now then. We're a few minutes early, but we'll take a short reset, be back by two thirty in our seats, please.
We are recording again. We're going to move to the report recommendations of the Electoral Area Services Committee, you know, B fifteen, one to the board and horse.
Apologies for my absence, Chair. I would, important recommendation, your right for previous service in the beginning of May this year for all directors, C one, C two, R four and R six.
Thank you. In a second. So you'd like to pull R six, so this would be C one, C two and R R four, but second. Are there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all of favor.
Who opposed the motion carriers? The horse. Move R six, the second of R six, signed by Director Markman. Soon directly you'd like to speak to him.
Yes, I should. Hope we support this motion. I think when we spend just a comeback, a large efficiency or an error or, you know, we made decisions without full information or correct information, it's an opportunity to look at that service and decide, are we staying within our budget or are we going to be increasing the budget originally? So we do not have that option. So I.
Thank you. The speaker's motion. Seeing none, all of the question, all in favor. Opposed, Director, opposed motion carriers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electoral Area Directors, only the following, R two, R three, and the infamous U B one.
We have a second proposed item, Electoral Area Director, only second by Director Stigall
Move all those legends except U B one.
Second by Director Spell. A discussion on the items that are on the floor. Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed, opposed motion carriers.
Move U B one and seconded, second of U B one, Director Muplin and Director Nicholson.
Thank you. I just like to make a point that I am disappointed that we are not doing as much as we can to let a lot of use of some watershed this point of time.
Any further discussion? Strata Electoral Area Directors, only all those in favor, opposed. Director Nicholson, Markman, and Jack, opposed motion carriers.
That concludes my report. Hopefully, U one.
Thank you. Mr. Robbins, on staff.
We're at S R one, reporting facilities and transit division, regards to twenty three four, B five, B C Transit. C V R D annual operating revenue, there are two recommendations, with here, we have five guests from B C Transit.
And with Mr. Wakeham as well as Mr. Wakeham. At least it's not when Markman. At least it's not when Marcus took it and I called him Mr. Keebler. I heard that, I think it's a lot, you remember that. That's also when I talk about reports that are included in the staff reports, but that's a difference. Mr. Waycom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Directors. Good afternoon. So the approval of the annual operating agreement, this is an annual action item that the board goes through every year. Normally, there's really no notable or significant changes to the language in the document. It does have a summarized budget at the end as well, but for this year, there is an additional item that we do want to get your feedback on and approval. And that is to add the Lenora Farm into the custom service area boundary. In the package, it shows what boundary we're talking about, and in hindsight, the more we thought about this recently, we likely should have brought this to the board back in 2016, when the custom service boundary area was first implemented and discussed. And the intent of that was to try and keep service as cost effective as we could with the resources we had, and tried to keep it close to the local service routes that we have. So the item really stems from about six to eight residents who attend Lenora Farm programs before the custom service areas was established. When the boundary was established, those few items were considered legacy clients, or the old term is grandfathered, and so they were provided service. In speaking with the facility manager who's also in the room for us over there, they made us aware that there's other clients who would like to access HandyDart that can take programs at Lenora Farm, but since they're outside the boundary, they were not legacy clients at the time, the transit operator is unable to service them. Since the bus is already going to that location, it just made sense to BC Transit and our CVRD transit staff that we add this property location to the custom boundary area. And the best way to handle that is at the AOA process. So we're requesting that the board consider amending the boundary, which would legitimize the service provided to legacy clients, as well as authorize further service to Lenora Farm, which can be planned and properly scheduled by both them and their operator. Again, the manager of that facility is here, if there's any questions for her, or myself, or Seth Wright as well, if BC Transit is here. The budget standpoint, I did speak in the report, it's, it's, it's in line with the 2024 budget.
Great.
This move recommendations, staples any discussion.
See none, all of those in favor. Thank you. And Mr. Waycom. Yet, but see him here as well. It's Mr. Robbins. We're going to go to SR2, the report for General Manager, Canadian Service, in regards to insufficient technology.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins, Mr. Chair. Fairly brief report, as the board's aware, I've been providing some GM support to the IT Division for a temporary period. It's been brought to my attention that there is insufficient funding within the IT Division's budget within function 100. So we're here to potentially rectify that in the specific areas of software, for IT software, for GIS, and our telephone system as well. We would like some funding to continue the support from our consultants as we move through the current IT transition. So fairly brief report, it's for you, I'm here for any questions.
Thanks, Chair. Just, I see it's an increase in traction from the operating reserves. Can you tell me? How will that affect?
The number one avenue for operating reserves is usually through surplus through the previous year. So if the funds aren't expended in function 100, that would automatically go into the operating reserve. I don't know of any other way to do that. Typically, any grant application goes into, into capital reserve.
Well, a lot of the minimum, just take it below the max.
That's my IT, but in this, this statement made in the background. About the sufficient of budgets that have to contribute for group part. Is that a one off or like, I just.
Leave us especially something standard, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, through the Director Department, I would call this a special circumstance that certainly there were some unknowns within the IT Division and some challenges for creating the budget. So I would like to compliment Finance for filling in some of the gaps around that. I would call that a one off.
See none, all of those in favor. Oh, just a comment on the way out, hopefully the course directions for doing IT stick. You don't have to redo these investments in the future.
SR3, the report from the Executive Office, with regards advocacy, senior level of government. There is a recommendation for you as well. This is a new special about.
Thank you. First.
I'll move that recommendation.
Second by Director Madam, that's discussion. So I, I, oh, precious, go ahead.
I was just wondering if there's an opportunity to collaborate with other regional districts on three, four. So it's not just us.
So your question, Director Segal, three, four, and five, question?
Yes. And so, yeah, if this is also like there and I I think it'll be more powerful if.
If I can, if I can speak to that, so regarding two firstly, there is, I've already actually received a draft letter, which speaks to the recommendation there, which has gone out to all regional districts. And so we already have that, which we can move forwards with. Regarding three, there is an interest in our neighboring regional districts and those on Vancouver Island to, to do that partnership to speak of. And then regarding number four, I am unclear if there is issues in other regional districts regarding that topic in particular. And so there's, there's a few different options there for consideration on how we want to proceed with that one.
And I would say five is an easy one because I've read in this paper. Regional districts, similar against. Go ahead, Director.
I talked to another EA director from like the Sunshine Coast area who like has incredible success getting the province to come and help them with their ministry of environmental action. So I guess this one, maybe there's not a big learning. Why is this a problem here from other areas of the province?
Chair, with regards to number three, and trying to be a happy complete silence, if we go back, the submissions made as one of the we see the submissions from the other regional districts, so it should be your picture of what other regional districts, so tell me, I don't hear anything. EBCM meetings, right? EBCM cycle. Great, thank you. Any further, Director Acton?
Yeah, I, when I read this report, I was interested in number one, including officers, I thought that was something so would be, is that in the DOD stage or is that a recommendation from, from staff?
Recommendations, just to stand.
No, through the chairs, Director Acton, so just to reflect, these topics were raised at committee. And so there's, there's basically just a little bit of content on each one. And, you know, the nature of the report is being kind of some recommendations on how advocacy could proceed on each item. But yeah, the staff recommendation for number one is not to proceed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? None, all of those in favor. SR4, the report from the Recycling and Waste Management Division, with regards to solid waste, by the 2022 and 2023 annual progress reports. These are for your information. Thank you. So I do see our solid waste staff here, do you have a presentation or did you want to just respond to questions? What does respond to questions? Our Department.
So dare I say the word restore?
So staff are able to answer that question.
I read the report, thank you. And I just found it at our assumption. Four to five hundred. Forty-two thousand tons going to plant and fill. I'd love to see a little bit more go to the reuse, like you got the recycle, like use. I know it talks about habitat, humanity, but do you see any way of expanding the reuse part of program?
Thank you so much. We would love to expand that program. So as you recall, we came back with a report asking for some temporary support for sort of a smaller measure to do reuse at meat, peerless, and beans. But really what we have come to realize is we need to go full force on this. So once we're done with three stream and have cleared some other things off our plate, like the beans organization, I think it'd be really interesting to come up with a concept plan and have a consultant research good models, like what actually works. There's been some really interesting examples in other places in the world. And once we have a concept, we can apply for funding. And that would give us the opportunity to do something about this without increasing taxes. So that is definitely on our wish list and also part of the solid waste management plan, just not at this very time.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, restore. I, I log the efforts that the camps operate, breaks, restore. Agencies coming in. Attempting to provide the surplus, but I'm a regular user of our Beans Creek facility. I spotted there by members of the public on a regular basis. And number one question I get is when it's restart coming back. So we have some room to do that. In regards to something that was very important, and I don't want to saddle staff with, you know, more work on this, but there's, as long as I've been here, there's been questions about the establishment of a facility on Vancouver Island so that not just us, but other jurisdictions aren't shipping our waste long distances to another country and subject to all the risks that are associated with that. Is there beyond the, what was the EBI CCC Solid Waste Committee? Could staff update us on any discussions that are being held around the idea of a solid waste facility for the landfilling or other, other possibilities?
Very, your chair, oh, thank you. Very, your chair to Director Morrison. Yes, so actually the CVD and RRDN got together a couple of years ago and we're talking about this very issue. We're very concerned about the future. So through the help of Coast Waste Management Association, who's sharing a new working group that we have with Metro Vancouver and all the regional districts up along the island. So we've been meeting four times a year to just, at this time, we've been looking at what are the challenges and opportunities that we can work on. And what we're hearing is that there are regional districts in the Okanagan and also a municipality, I won't mention their names, that have five years left on their landfill, some have 10. And our next step is to work with the province in saying, how do we all collaborate? Because we're all running out of space and more and more regional districts are looking at Robanco, Washington as an option. So there are, we're in that boat and there are two other regional districts and there are more looking at it. But we know that's not the answer we need, especially in the event of a disaster. So we don't have, we don't generate enough waste to warrant the construction of an incinerator or our own landfill. So we're really looking to collaborate here and we don't know what that's going to look like, but we're very excited to have all these great partnerships with other regional districts. So we're hoping to report out on that in the coming couple of years, have some kind of solution.
Thank you. So I know EBI CCC is doing that right, it's the solid waste and circular economy is now so it has reuse, recycle, never. Sustainable long-term solution for the island. Maybe the pressure comes when everybody else runs out of space or we're not the only ones. Any other questions for staff? Keep up the just keep trying to keep things moving. Director, we're going to let it not recognize you.
Sorry, sorry, Chair. Oh, just a comment more than a question. People see once the three screen comes on in the electoral areas, it's there's uptick of the communities, so the reduction about 40% in those exports from deep bomb, that's an totally the amount of compostables that's diverted from landfills once that is implemented. So hopefully we will get some updates once that implement and get away from recording the five programs.
Great, thank you. Director Nicholson.
I ask the question of staff, do we, do we know the ratio of residential to multi?
We can provide you that information. We don't have to. It's included in our 2017 Waste Composition Study, and we are conducting another Waste Composition Study this year, so we can provide you updated numbers as the summer evolves.
But just a comment. Yosa very kindly came last night and gave a presentation about three stream to the South community folks. And what I learned was that we will be going to try and address the industrial business multiplex residential after we get the three stream and so forth in, running in place. And it just which I think is completely appropriate given the resourcing that we have. But it is a shame that we can't move more quickly on the bigger waste issue, which I think is, you know, I've had, think about hospital personnel. I mean, there's just like, there's a huge, but we have to get the organic self, of course, before we can do that. But I think it's something that we really need to focus on.
Staff can provide comment on that. There is new legislation in the RDM, the mandatory waste source separation bylaw, which requires all, all buildings, residential, institutional, to provide three streams, by, to provide containers for three stream separation. They're reinforcing that with a waste hauler bylaw that would incentivize haulers to ensure that these wastes are separated. So that the goal of this is to
So that the goal of this is to, is to share some of the responsibility for source separation, not only on the users, but also on the haulers as well. So we're taking a wait and see approach to see how this rolls out. I believe Parksville is taking the first step now that that bylaw is in place, and they're going to be rolling out that independent of the waste hauler licensing. So we'll have a lot of valuable information in the coming years on the success of that program.
Thank you. Because I was saying implementations, I think. Including seeing, I see one building has separation, organics. Makes pretty exciting. Sort of just as. This is all good to see that. Right in front of the discussion. Seeing none, that was for information. I have an interesting story about that. These next series of bylaws are for electoral area directors. There is a lot of opportunity for us to do it on the bus, so everybody meet. Number of these are with respect to bill forty-four, living of the statue better from B C, and some housekeeping amendments with respect to definitions, catch sweeps. So we'll start with recommendation of B E A one, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, four, six. Southern couch is only by law. Lines twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Segal, second by Director Acton. All those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed? Was there any opposed? And opposed motion carries. And your B E A two, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, four, seven, like to like a beachside. Give like funding event by law. Lines twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Acton, second by Director Segal. All those in favor? Any opposed? Opposed motion carries. B E A three, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, four, non-electoral area, the couching, the zone amendment by law. Bill forty, compliance twenty twenty-four be adopted. Director Hollis, second by Director Nicholson, all those in favor? Any opposed? B E A four, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, five, zero, electoral area, H. Couch in the station, second with Lenora Zone Amendment by law. Bill forty, compliance, clients, twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Nicholson, second by Director Acton. All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? Five, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, five, electoral area, half couch, holding stuff. That's called, no amendment by law, bill forty, where the clients, clients, by twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Morrison, second by. All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed, motion carries. B E A six, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, five, to electoral area, G. So pair call, by law, zoning amendment by law, bill forty-four, compliance twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director McClintock, second by Director Martin, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed? Love the interstitial collaboration on the motions, folks. B E A seven, that C V R D, C V D. C V R D bylaw four, five, five, to electoral area, H, North Oyster, Diamonds Zone Amendment by law. Adopted, moved by Director Martin, second by Director Acton, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed, motion carries. B E A eight, that C V R D, B E R D bylaw number four, five, five, four, electoral area, I. You will need, we're zoning amendment by law, bill forty-four, compliance, compliance twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Acton, second by Director Acton, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed? Seven, Director, Mr. Locken, member of Z A, B two. A B E A nine, that C V D. B E R D bylaw number four, five, seven, to electoral area, H, zoning amendment by law. App suites and miscellaneous amendments twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Acton, second by Director Martin, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed, motion carries. B E A ten, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, seven, four, electoral area, the couching, the app one, zoning amendment by law. Miscellaneous amendments twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Hollis, second by Director Segal, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed, motion carries. B E A eleven, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, seven, by electoral area, the couching station. That number one, or zoning amendment by law, miscellaneous amendments twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Acton, second by Director Martin, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed, motion carries. B E A twelve, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, seven, six, electoral area, first slate. Southern, that's called, zoning amendment by law, app suites and miscellaneous amendments twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Morrison, second by Director Segal, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed, motion carries. B E A thirteen, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, seven, seven, electoral area, G. So pair call, by law, zoning amendment, app suites and miscellaneous amendments twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Clint, second by Director Martin, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. B E A fourteen, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, seven, to electoral area, H, North Oyster, Diamonds Zone Amendment. By law, miscellaneous amendments twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Martin, second by Director. All those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed? B E A fifteen, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, seven, electoral area, I. You will need, create zoning amendment by law, miscellaneous amendments twenty twenty-four be adopted. Moved by Director Dex, first, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed, motion carries. B E A sixteen, first recommendation, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, eight, seven, five. By law, twenty twenty-four granted, first. By Director Morrison, second by Director. All those opposed, motion carries. The second recommendation, that said by law be adopted. Moved by Director Morrison, second by. Segal, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Chairman, other permanent all three. B E A seventeen, for my by law today. Two recommendations. The first, that C V R D bylaw number four, five, eight, ticket information authorization and schedule change by law. Twenty twenty-four be granted, first, second, third, fourth, fifth. Moved by Director Morrison, second by Director Segal, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed, motion carries. Followed that said by law. Moved by Director Nicholson, second by Director Acton, all those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. W. You can think of another way to screw up your name. So Mr. Robbins. Watered it. We have a great question here. All this point for impressions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I beg the words indulgence as I just think I got my question answered by staff in the hallway. However, I would want to ask if the board is aware of the gap in the South End with such events such as pop-ups, free stores and so on, because we don't actually have a venue that supports those kinds of events. And furthermore, is the board, or does the C V R D, this is a follow-up question related to this topic. Does the C V R D have supports for citizens who want to organize? For example, a curbside free-for-all, which I've heard about on Facebook, where all items might get put to the curb and then a one-day event might be scheduled. But I have a lot of questions and concerns about how that logistically could work. And so I'm wondering if the C V R D has guidance. Thank you.
I do not, unfortunately, know how to answer that other question. But it makes sense that the way I've been given itself, that maybe that's a challenge. I know this league, we offer. Thing up, and then those free items get put out. Or people to come and pick them up, taken by X state at time. That's available in the lifelong areas, but. Just followed up with the staff, I'll follow up with, so I can ask them if you have a response for it.
Super, thank you all.
Mr. Robbins. Motion at the meeting, most probably in accordance with Community Order Part Four, Division, Section ninety. Some sections have been in accordance with each. Moved by Director Segal, second by. All those in favor? Any opposed, not opposed? We are closed, over, soon at three fifty. Thank you. Everybody's here. We may have staff.